I'd like to call the meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of July 11th, 2016. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Here.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Here.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Here.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Here. The first item this evening is a recognition of the Library Volunteer of the Month, and Councilmember Zuniga will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my honor to recognize Volunteer of the Month for the Library, Peter Burgett. The Santa Maria Public Library is pleased to honor Peter Burgett as July's Volunteer of the Month. Mr. Burgett has volunteered at the Santa Maria Public Library for over 11 years, doing a variety of different tasks, including greeting visitors as they pass through the lobby. Many young visitors look forward to seeing Peter's collection of teddy bears, which are an instant conversation starter and favorite with the children. Peter started with the library in 2005, and his first assignment was to assist students in learning to use new grant-funded laptops for school assignments or homework. Eleven years later, Peter continues to help students in the library's new after-school homework center. He patiently listens, uses flashcards with students, and helps with any type of homework the children have. Thanks to volunteers like Peter, some of the children have greatly improved their performance in school. Peter is a very dedicated volunteer, as evidenced by his receipt of the prestigious Jefferson Award in 2006 and the Spirit of Santa Maria Award in 2015. In addition to the library, Peter volunteers for the Santa Maria Police Department, Santa Barbara County Sheriff's Department, the animal shelter, Museum of Flight, Civil Air Patrol, and Central Coast RSVP. The community is a better place because of volunteers like Peter, and the library sincerely thanks Mr. Burgett for caring and for making a difference. So, he's here, you come up and get him.
(applause)
Oh, there he is.
I'm here.
I'm looking all over. I don't see you, you gotta stand down so I can see you.
I'm looking at Mary, like, where is he? Here. Of course, I should move that way. (inaudible). First, I'd like to thank the mayor and the council, and of course, Mary with the library, for this wonderful, wonderful, wonderful presence. It just means I have to work harder.
Oh, goodness.
Once you get an award, you'd have to double your time, but there's no more time to double. That was only some of the places I volunteered, so... But my love of people, my desire to help others is overwhelming, and I appreciate this greatly. Thank you.
Thank you.[189.01][189.01](applause) And we certainly appreciate you, because I know you volunteer all over the place. You're all over the place.
And we should mention his tie. He's got an awesome tie, and I'm sure the kids love. It's got Mickey Mouse on it.
Ms. Halsel, would you like to make any comments?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. I would like to add my comments and those of my staff who realize what a special volunteer Peter is. As you mentioned, he's worked in many different city departments and organizations around the city, so he is very well-known for his good deeds and helpfulness. And we really have a lot of gratitude and appreciation for his help at the library and especially the Homework Help Center, because he's so patient with the kids, and not everybody has that patience to sit with them and work through their reading or their homework. So that's a very special gift that Peter has. And so for that, Peter, thank you, and I hope you continue with us for a long time. Thank you.[263.14][263.14](applause)
Thank you, Ms. Halsel. The next item is the presentation of the All-America Cities 2016 Spirit of Santa Maria Award. Last June, the City Council had the honor of presenting a new award known as the Spirit of Santa Maria Award. The award recognizes individuals, organizations, and businesses that contribute a significant amount of time, effort, resources, or funding towards addressing community needs and the overall well-being of our city. In 1998, the city of Santa Maria was one out of 10 cities who were recognized as an All-America City for the Santa Maria Benita School District's Healthy Starts Program, Peace Week, and the Los Adobes de María. The All-America City Award is presented by the National Civic League annually to 10 communities in the United States. It recognizes those whose citizens work together to identify and tackle community-wide challenges. The All-America City Committee is under the direction of the Recreation and Parks Commission. So we have Director of Recreation and Parks Alex Passata will present the award.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Good evening. It's my pleasure to come forward on behalf of the All-America City Committee and present this year's Spirit of Santa Maria Award recipient. All the information that you read is true and accurate, and so let's move on to talking about our nominee. There were several people nominated for this award this year. Cristal Robles is a youth volunteer, and she was selected as this year's recipient. Let me just tell you a little bit of what she's done, which is amazing. I think, Peter, you might have somebody running in your competition here. Cristal participated in the community education and translation services for the local 2-1 Human Services hotline. She led a youth forum to educate local professionals and dignitaries on the community's youth's perspective on local issues. She's coordinated a healing circle network with her peers in response to the recent youth violence affecting the community. She's coordinated a youth leadership group that identifies opportunities for teens that take an active role in improving Santa Maria. She's participated in the annual Toys for Tots Initiative for three years. She has committed to enrolling families and distributing toys to more than 1,500 families per year. She has provided translation services to Spanish and Mesteco-speaking families. And she has recruited youth to volunteer at events that have... pardon me, that have had little participation by youth, ensuring the success and continuation of those endeavors. And that includes activities such as the food pantry. So I'm very proud to announce and to introduce to you Cristal Robles as the recipient of the 2016 Spirit of Santa Maria Award, and we're very proud to be able to make this recognition. Thank you, Mayor.[448.84][448.84](applause)
First of all, thank you to the council and to the mayor for receiving this award. What can I say? I love what I do in encouraging my peers and helping around the community that has seen me grow up, and I hope that more youths can do the same and spread all the positive vibes around the city. And I hope to make an influence on them so they can continue doing what I do. And I'd like to thank everyone who has helped me, starting from my mentor, Elisa, Ms. Johnson, Jasmine, my parents, and I don't know, I'm excited. Thank you.[518.82][518.82](applause)
And as you see that beautiful infectious smile, this is the way she is all the time.
All the time.
And she is everywhere I go. I see her all over the place. So I know she's a busy lady, plus she has time even to go to school. Thank you, Cristal. Thank you very much.
And remind me, Cristal, you're trilingual, right?
Yes.
Yes, so she's also trilingual. She speaks three languages.
The next order of business is the public comment session. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed-session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken by the City Council on matters not on the printed agenda this evening. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak for them.
Before we begin the public comment session, I believe our city manager would like to say a few words regarding the Fourth of July activities. Mr. Hayden?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Patino, members of the City Council. I wanted to take this opportunity, this is the first council we've had since the Fourth of July, to give a recap on the recent Fourth of July-related activities. What I'd like to do is call up our Director of Recreation and Parks, Mr. Passata, so he can give a recap on the fireworks show and what we did in concert with Pioneer Valley, then followed by interim chief Scott Kinley of the Fire Department, that would give a presentation and an overview and recap of the number of structure fires that we had that were firework-related, as well as injuries that were firework-related injuries, and then conclude with Police Chief Ralph Martin, who would be giving us the total number of citations that were issued, calls for service, and whether or not the citations were either of a criminal nature or if they were civil and administrative in nature. While Chief Martin is making his presentation, I think because of the tenure that we have right now in the country dealing with use of force issues, I'd like Chief Martin just to briefly touch upon what the city's policy is, and specifically the Police Department's use of less-than-lethal force in the department.
Thank you, Mr. Hayden. Mr. Passata?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Just to give you a very quick recap, Fourth of July, the fireworks component, the show, was the city's responsibility. We contracted with a company called Pyros Spectacular out of Fresno. We, locally, were extremely successful in raising the $30,000 needed. I want to thank the scores of businesses in town that provided sponsorship for that event. So we'll have a nice little ad out in the paper thanking them for that. There's too many to name for you tonight. I'd also like to thank the Gujia family for allowing us to use a portion of their property to shoot the show from County Fire and the City Fire Department. Their staff were involved in getting the permitting and locating and all that, so it was, again, very helpful. I'd also like to thank the Police Department Sergeant Strecker and his team that were out that night, helping keep traffic in control and, you know, checking out on the public events. The public activities that occurred were at the high school. They started about 3:00 in the afternoon and then wound down just before the fireworks display. They had approximately 350 participants, this their first time trying an event like this. We had about 100 people use the Aquatic Center at Pioneer Valley High School during the day. Looks like there was about, right before the show, somewhere in the neighborhood between... I heard different numbers, between 600 and 800 cars that actually used the high school parking lot. The high school associated student body and team there charged $5 for parking, so hopefully they made a good amount of money from that event. They conducted during the day a concert, game booths, and different family activities. I was there most of the day, and people were coming back and forth from the school and, you know, seemed to have enjoyed themselves. The big event happened about 9:15, the fireworks show actually began. There was 509 shells that were shot out during the show. Ran a little bit longer, they ran into a few technical difficulties with their electronic launching, so the show was launched by hand. So it was interesting to see that. We did have a couple of minor incidents that Chief Kinley will talk about. Pardon me. One of the questions that I've heard was that, you know, gee, the fireworks show was so far away from the high school, and we do want to keep in mind that was a safety issue. There was a 1,000-foot minimum clearance that we had to abide by, so we located the fireworks actual shoot happening about 1,000...1,500, no, I'm sorry, not that far, 1,050 feet away from the high school location. So all in all, it went well from our perspective of having the show. Traffic was, again, handled by the police, but was relatively light and well-controlled. Anytime you tried to get 800 cars out of any one location, there was a little bit of a tie-up there, but I would estimate that the entire parking lot area was cleared in about 25 minutes. We did provide the neighborhood with staff at each of the entrances to the neighborhoods, you know, reminding people that it was for neighborhoods and their guests. That seemed to work pretty well, and we kept Panther Road open, and I think I mentioned before that we were going to close it, but kept it open, and everything seemed to run smoothly. So I'm happy to say I think it went very well from our perspective. Thank you. I'll turn it over to the chiefs.
Thank you, Mr. Passata.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. We had task force-related activities probably the three weeks leading up to the Fourth of July. As far as the Fire Department's concerned, we had a total of 14 citations issued over the three-week period, predominantly in the northwest and northeast areas of the city. Fire prevention personnel held two community meetings, conducted community outreach, consisting of walking targeted neighborhoods to talk to residents and hand out flyers, primarily in the areas of West Lee, North Concord, Evelyn Court, North Bryan, and North Barrington neighborhoods. Over 50 contacts were made in those areas, and individual meetings were held with 10 concerned citizens. Safe and sane booths, fire prevention personnel inspected 23 safe and sane fire booths, fireworks booths. Six of those booths needed re-inspections. One fireworks booth was closed down for failure to produce a state fire marshal permit. It was closed late afternoon on the second and reopened early morning on the third. Block party permits and inspections. Fire prevention personnel processed and inspected six requests for block party permit. One of those permitted block parties was found to have illegal fireworks activity. That block party will not be permitted in 2017. On the Fourth of July, the finale of the fireworks show generated two engine responses due to a grass fire along the bank of the river. There were five additional responses for fireworks-related incidents. One caused minor damage, less than $500, to an adjacent residence. The Fire Department did not respond to any calls for fireworks-related injuries. However, there was one second-hand report of a fireworks-related injury transported to the hospital by private auto.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Martin?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I wanted to share with you some of the actual statistics and numbers. So it actually breaks down into two months. We're talking about June and then July. As you know, we started the task force early so that it was somewhat education-based. Calls into the Police Department dispatch totaled 193, just in the six days from July 1st to July 6th. 193 calls. The vast majority, 85 of those, were on the Fourth of July. As you know, the city set up a hotline. And just in the month of June alone, there were 78 calls into the hotline, but there were 491 calls in the month of July. So June 78, and then July 491. So June and July hotline calls totaled 569 calls. There were two misdemeanor criminal citations issued. There was one criminal felony case issued, that is because the illegal fireworks exceeded a certain capacity, so it...like a half-stick dynamite-type things, like the M80s. The Department, along with the Fire Department and Code Enforcement, issued 23 administrative citations. Those are the $1,000 citations. Three were actually issued the day after the Fourth of July. One citation was $100 illegal use of safe and sane fireworks, and one was actually a third-party citation. So we had one where the citizens signed on that. The Department, along with Fire and Code Enforcement, we went to 12 different neighborhoods prior to the Fourth of July. We knocked on over 150 homes in areas where we've had calls previously to let them put them on notice, and it seemed to be fine in, you know, prior to Fourth of July and then after Fourth of July, but of course, everybody knew there were citations being issued. So Fourth of July, well, obviously, we heard the most fireworks being displayed. And that concludes my Fourth of July fireworks.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Mr. O'Rourke?
I'll jack off.
Okay, Mr. Boyson?
Well, I was just gonna...it seemed to me that the illegal fireworks were significantly less leading up to the Fourth of July and after the Fourth of July than we've seen in previous years, but it did seem like the Fourth of July, there was every bit as much as we've seen.
Yeah, I think you're absolutely accurate. Every officer said that there was much less leading up all the way through the third. The fourth was the most that most of them have ever heard.
Yeah.
And then after that, it substantially went down. So as long as we continue to let people know that we're seeing the citations out there, I think that we're gonna...it'd take a long time. We used to have programs in other areas where people would shoot their guns on the Fourth of July, and we used to have a number of gunshot victims, and that reduced down to almost zero. So it does take a period of time to educate the people not to do certain things.
Yeah, thank you, Chief.
Mr. Boy...I mean, Mr. O'Rourke?
I keep forgetting my name, madam. Just since I live over by Pioneer Valley High School, I did visit Alex and our great staff in setting up, and what was interesting was there were a lot of people walking, as I did, over to the school, so I think the entire neighborhood then. I guess a lot of people parked at the vet's clinic and got a great shot of the show in the parking lot there. And I think everyone that I've talked to, people that live in Orkut, you know, Fourth of July was gangbusters for everyone, but leading up to that, there were a few days we could hear a few bangs and whizzes, but the Fourth of July relatively quieted down after 11:00, 11:30. It was amazing, and then on the fifth, there was some, but I have to say and congratulate everybody that did the effort. Pioneer Valley High School came through our neighborhood and passed out flyers. VTC on behalf of the city came through and passed out fires. I went in my subdivision with 109 flyers to warn people about, but there were some illegal fireworks. Went off in my neighborhood, and I think they were trying to rival Pioneer Valleys. But what was nice, they had the stadium lights on, and everyone was in the stadium, and when the fireworks started, they dimmed the lights and they played music. So it was pretty spectacular, actually, and so Alex and his crew did a fine job. And I'll tell you, the traffic cleared out. There was ju...it was totally amazing to see the order that you guys provided for the citizens that live right there at Pioneer Valley and La Ventana and Legacy and so forth. So anyway, congratulations.
Thank you. Any other questions? What about animals? Because I hadn't heard any reports of we've had any, or any lost animals reported.
I don't have any information about any animals. We'd probably have to ask the county or Animal Control. It's possible we received some calls, but...
Madam Mayor, we do have Jan Glick, the Director of Animal Control, in the audience. I would ask if she wouldn't mind responding back to that question.
Good evening, Ms. Glick.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. We think we saw a limited...a lower incidence of animals coming into the Santa Maria Animal Center. Over the week around the Fourth of July, we took in 44 dogs. Of those, 22 have been returned to owner, so a pretty high percentage that got returned to owner. One cat that came in related to Fourth of July, we think, and was returned to owner. We did have at least one dog that was killed on the streets that we're aware of, being hit by a car, but was probably related to fear from the fireworks. But in past years, we've had a lot of injured animals, and at this point, I don't have a lot of reports that we took in injured animals that the county had to care for. Some pet owners may have had to have that on the personal level, but overall, we...less than what we've seen in the past. So we were very pleased with the results.
Thank you, and thank you for being here tonight.
Sure, my pleasure.
Okay. Before we move on, Mr. Hayden, do you wish to make any comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of closing remarks on the firework action report, and then I wanted to turn it back over to Chief Martin and say a few words about the use of force. I wanted to give kudos out to our two public safety departments, the Police Department, the Fire Department, our city attorney's office, code compliance, as well as our city rangers, because they put together a firework task force. They worked together with Animal Control. We put together a game plan along with Deputy City Manager Stillwell and Mark Bannycamp from our office. Public education. We went out, we did public education, we did flyers, we did leaflets, we did yard signs to get the word out to be neighborly. If you're gonna let out fireworks, do it on the Fourth of July. Don't do it two weeks before, one week afterwards. So I think we were successful in that regard. As far as citations are concerned, as the chief said, we issued 24 citations, plus the one administrative citation. Over, basically, two dozen citations. We have not issued any citations in years past. So I think we did do a good enforcement from the city's perspective, albeit there was a lot of fireworks on the Fourth of July itself. However, we had to triage those calls with the rest of the calls for service that we had to deal with. So I'd like to turn it back over to Chief Martin to talk about the use of force.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, prior to me coming to Santa Maria, I think you may recall that one of my areas of expertise is use of force, and I was employed as an expert witness in that area. I actually began gathering that data back in 1992 and was on a special panel, because the agency I worked for was being successfully sued, and we were not doing a very good job of collecting data that would put us in a favorable light. And so when it came to Santa Maria, we changed that. The Department, the Santa Maria Police Department, began collecting in-depth statistics about four years ago on all uses of force, because the California law requires that we do collect that data and then turn that into them each year. Last year, the Santa Maria Police Department, along with the City Council, provided funding so that we could purchase a program called IA Pro/Blue Team. It's a $26,000 system that allows police departments to track use of force and other incidents involving each of our personnel, and it gives us a management snapshot of each and every person and everything that they do, and track it for years. Last year, the Santa Maria Police Department arrested 6,034 people, and of those arrests, force was used 104 times. That factors out to be 1.7%. So out of every 100 arrests we made last year, we never had an issue with 98.3 of the 1.7. The national average is around 2%. Of the 104 incidents, the vast majority, and I differentiate, I have a force severity chart that I utilize, and it starts at verbal commands and hands-on and holds, and then you use your various instruments from batons and all the way up to deadly force. Of the 104 incidents that we had, the vast majority of them were less than significant. In other words, no one had to see a doctor, nobody had to be hospitalized. It was a pain-compliance hold, but nonetheless, we still document that as a use of force. And the reason we do that is that we need to show the totality of the force, because when we do have one where we may have to use deadly force and we're sued, we can show that as a department, we're in compliance. It's not a department that has a pattern, as they say in federal court, of use of force. So if you only collect the bad use of force, then that's the only use of force that the federal courts think you use. So we collect everything. The council, I'd like to remind you that you did authorize the Office of Independent Review that came in and continues to do audits. They will require us to send them samples, and they do critical review of those. And then lastly, I would state that if anybody wants to know how transparent Santa Maria Police Department is, they need to go only now to the Santa Maria website, the city website. Go to the Police Department. We put all of our force incidents up there. All the numbers are there, all the arrests are there, all the citizen complaints are there. Everything is there for review, and so there's nothing hidden. We do not put, obviously, personnel names on there because we're restricted by Pobar and some other laws in California, but the Department has spent 5,000 hours a year in training, and we think we've seen a substantial, not a reduction, but a more professional way of how we're doing business. I will tell you that there were times when we could have used deadly force in a number of incidents the last couple of years, and the officers and supervisors on the scene used either 40-millimeter...these are people that are armed with guns, people that are armed with knives and other things, and we de-escalate that by using less-than-lethal force. So I'm really proud of them. They're doing a very good job, but we do continually train them because that has to be... But we do continually train them because that has to be ingrained in their whole. We have 40 new officers. No better time to train them than we do now. So that concludes my, just my overall general comments, but I'll be more than happy to answer questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Nope. Okay. Thank you, Chief Martin.
Thank you.
Just one thing.
Mr. Boyson?
The only thing that I would want to comment on, I know in our last council notes, we received some information regarding the crime mapping on the city's website. Really excellent.
Thank you.
And would encourage anybody that wants to know what the crime levels are and what type of crimes are happening in their neighborhoods to take a look at that. It's very easy to use, so.
It is. And one of the things I should mention with that crime mapping, because we're purchasing the new Motorola Premier One system, the city has 96 reporting districts. And I think they were put on there 50 years ago because it was really the voting polls. I think they were voting polls. So in the last week or so, we've reduced that, and there'll be a new map out. So rather than 96, there will only be 21 reporting districts. So we can assign, supervisors can go in, and up in the north end, there'll be eight reporting districts, in the middle will be eight, and about eight in the south. It's a better way to capture data so that we can send units into a certain area when we see the number spike. But you can't do it with 96. It's too many RDs. So, thank you.
Neither can we deal with 96.
It's just a difficult map to try to work with, so.
I digress.
Thank you. So moving on to the public comment period, Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers this evening?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay, no requests to speak. That concludes the public comment. Before we move on, Mr. Hayden, do you have any comments? Okay. Moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Okay. Do I have any items that you wish to pull? Mr. Boyson?
Madam Mayor, I will be recusing myself on item G because of potential conflict interest.
G?
Actually, I've got comments to make on CFI, JK, and L. I'm sorry. Just some comments, but I do have a concern on one of them, so is that okay with you?
This Waterfield.
I will have to recuse myself on item D.
Because I don't think that you do, but.
Item D is payment of warrants? Yes.
Oh, okay. Ms. Zuniga?
Item K.
Item K.
Please, thank you.
I think we're gonna have them all covered, so. Okay. Item C, personnel changes resulting from the adoption of the 2016-18 city budget. Mr. O'Rourke.
And I just want to comment and congratulate staff and Rick because there are some personnel changes that I think are very logical and have been a long time coming with our community development group moving over to, which is more realistic, over to the ComDev. And then I think the IT department coming under the City Administrator's Office and things of that nature. So I just wanted to comment that, you know, some of this is pretty significant now, and it's been moving in this direction, I think, over the years. So just wanted to make that comment for the public.
Okay, item number F is financial contributions to outside agencies, an addendum to the current agreement between the city and the Chamber of Commerce for Economic Development Service, an agreement with the County of Santa Barbara for animal control services.
Okay. I've heard that, and I'll just, I don't know where to start, but Central Coast Collaborative on Homelessness, C3H, we had quite a discussion last time, as is evident in our minutes. And we upped the ante by up to $24,000. And the representatives were here and talking about what they were going to do for us for the extra $12,000. And then the concern, I think, for all of us was, we need to see the results that comes out of that. Subsequently, I've heard that they have, in fact, reduced the amount of time that the fellow, and I forgot his name that came up because he was the representative from C3H, that he's at half-time. So I guess my question is, if we've doubled our amount of money, and now we're getting half of what we were getting for the first part, how does $24,000 equate to the $6,000 that we may be receiving in actual activities? And so I guess my question is, how can I ask to defer that particular item out of this section? I don't want to, you know, there's a lot of other people to be paid out. But how do we, I don't want to say stop that, but suspend that because we've got two representatives, Terry and Jack, on the regional group that could find out exactly what's going to come out of the funding that we have all agreed that was important. And so I don't know whether that's a ask you, Rick, or if that's an ask Gil, how to hold that off and give it a California nod maybe in a month or two when we get a little more definitive answer of what we're going to get for our bucks, citizens' money.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Rourke, members of the City Council. What Councilmember O'Rourke is referring to is staff had a meeting with the C3H representatives probably within the last week. And it was noted that the part-time outreach coordinator that they had was no longer going to be working in the North County. And so my understanding is that there's a policy committee meeting this coming Wednesday?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday morning.
At which time, Councilmember Zuniga and also Councilmember Boyson would be in a position to ask them why that transition happened. So is that a fair representation? I have two staff members that were at that meeting. I was not. Okay.
We also have to meet to schedule with O'Rourke to talk about the deliverables to the city council.
Okay, yeah. One of the things the city council mentioned is that they wanted some type of deliberals, something that could have some metrics to come back to the city council and make a presentation. And staff will be meeting with them tomorrow regarding that issue.
So my question still is, how can we put that in abeyance and go on with the rest of the motion is all? I'm not sure how to do that because I have.
They're all separate resolutions.
Okay.
And so.
That's true.
Council could make a determination on approving all of F, A through F, inclusive of item D. Or council could make a motion on agenda item F, A, B, C, E, and F, and hold off on voting on D and have us bring this back at the next city council meeting in August.
And Madam Mayor, if I could.
Yes, Mr. Boyson?
Way in on this. And I've had some discussions with Mr. Hayden and also had reports. I did not attend the meeting that the C3H representatives had with the city or the coordinating committee. But I do understand that there is some issues. I haven't had a chance to talk with the executive director of C3H. I wish he had been here last week, but his representative certainly did make promises. I went back through, re-watched the video to make sure that I hadn't misunderstood. I think there were some very specific promises made that I would like to get answers to at this Thursday's Policy Council meeting and have very intention of doing that. I do believe that during our deliberations, we did mention that we wanted to see deliverables from C3H before going forward with this. We haven't cut a check to them. I think that with staff meeting with C3H, that we can come back to the city council and let them know what the deliverables are and make a determination whether that's satisfactory to us, as well as getting some response on Thursday for that. So I'm not sure that we have to actually deny the allocation at this point in time or to defer the allocation at this point in time. I think up until we cut the check, we have that ability as city council. And certainly, I am not in favor of authorizing the cutting of that check until we have received some explanations and know exactly what we are going to get for our investment in C3H.
Okay. Ms. Waterfield?
I agree with what Jack just said, but the part that I disagree with is I don't feel comfortable in go ahead and approving item D. I would rather just pull that one item until we do, you guys do go to your meeting and you do get your answers, and we can come back and look at that again.
You know, again, I guess my only thing, I don't know that this is a firm policy decision by the C3H Policy Council, and I would certainly like to give them that opportunity to explain themselves and to explain to us what those deliverables are, that they are going to be able to achieve. The fact that they've eliminated a part-time position, I'm not sure if that means that they're going to be reallocating personnel up here or just what it is. So.
As a suggestion, it does, under Resolution 2016-95, indicate that the Director of Finance is hereby authorized and directed to pay the sum of $12,000 prior to January of 2017. So that's the amount that we're paying right now is $12,000 to C3H. The additional $12,000 isn't payable until after January of 2017. So that does give you some time to reassess that.
And then when, I guess, backing out of something is a little tougher to do than to put a hold and then move forward, is my suggestion, you know. I would leave it to staff to make sure we're aware of that. And if we have to put the brakes on or turn the engine off, I'll lead the charge.
I could indicate that we could have this as an agendaized item, if you'd like, for the meeting of August the 2nd, to talk about what happened at the policy committee meeting on this Thursday.
I'd like that.
And then also what the deliverables are that staff came up with.
I think that would probably be better because we don't know what the deliverables are. And last time that we were here, they were telling us something else. And now we're hearing, you know, from the back, through the back door, that something else is going to happen. So I'm sure with Mr. Boyson and Ms. Zuniga going to the meeting on Thursday, it'll be clearer, hopefully. But I would just assume not even allocate any of the monies at this point. That's my feeling.
If I could, Mayor.
Go ahead.
You know, I think that as long as we are assured by City Manager that we have the ability in the future, if we come back from the meeting and there are going to be issues, that we don't have to allocate that additional $12,000. I would propose that we do move ahead as well because we're making assumptions. Just because we've heard that they've eliminated this part-time position, that doesn't mean that there wasn't a personnel issue, a staffing issue, that maybe they're not doing some redesigning of their staff, which happens all the time in the nonprofit world. So, you know, us assuming that elimination of that part-time person means that they're going to reduce or not have services here, it could be exactly the opposite of that. They could really, once we talk to them, have a plan.
I agree. But we were told here they were going to do one thing, and now we hear, and I'm not sure who's hearing what and what is being heard. So I think we need that clarified by them, probably at a city council meeting, or at least when you guys come back from that meeting. That's my position.
Absolutely. Because the person that told us this is no longer there. Is, am I correct?
No, he's still there.
He's there.
It was the other.
But the other guy. The other guy. Okay.
Well, and I certainly appreciate this. This is great direction. It allows me to go in there and not say that it's just me that has these concerns. So I do appreciate that. I agree with Councilmember Zuniga that I'm okay with the initial $12,000 contribution. I mean, that's basically what we have been doing all along. And I think that, you know, that's an appropriate contribution if we, even if we only receive the volunteer coordination and that sort of thing that C3H has been doing a very effective job on over the last couple of years. So, you know, I'm ready to go forward on it, but, you know, let's have a separate vote and see where we go on that.
Okay. Okay. I, oh, Mr. Hayden.
In conference with the city attorney, the proposal under item number three on the resolution, we could add some language that says, "The mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute the same on behalf of the city unless otherwise authorized and directed by the city council." I don't know if that helps council on that or not, so.
To go forward with it or?
What it would be is basically, we can adopt it as-is, but by the time it comes for us to cut a check, we would already have had the meeting with Councilmember Boyson and Councilmember Zuniga and 3CH to know what direction they're wanting to go. And then we would get confirmation whether or not we should cut the check to them for the $12,000.
And then the mayor would make that determination to go forward without bringing it back to the council as a whole?
Well, I think if the decision is not to go forward, we need to bring that back to the city council for action. Otherwise, we should be going forward.
I think it's important for the whole council to hear exactly what the deliverables are, because I'm not even happy with the first $12,000, so.
And I think that's what Mr. Hayden is saying, unless authorized by the city council. So that would give us the out for.
Yes. And then what I will do is I will agendize this for the meeting at the 12 based off of the comments that we're hearing tonight.
Thank you.
Is that California, not everybody agree with that?
Excuse me, the 2nd of August. August 2nd.
Let's see, item I, Los Alamos Branch Library Extended Hours, Mr. O'Rourke.
Well, I just, I had, I was going to report this, that council notes that Lafco, that I attended Local Agency Formation Commission in Santa Barbara last week, part of the discussion with the executive director from Lafco was that there may be an attempt to do a countywide CSD or Community Service Library District. And I don't know, I meant to call Mary and ask if she had, oh, there, over there, I'm sorry, if she had heard that. So I'm just throwing that out as a form of education for the council, too, that it seems there may be a movement. I don't know how that affects us and our dealings with the county, Lafco, and so forth. So I just thought I'd throw that out.
Item 3J, the receipt of donation from the Santa Maria Police Council, Mr. O'Rourke.
Oh, just, that's dynamite. You know, it's $50,000 and the group that raised this money, the police.
Council.
Police council, I'm sorry, participated in a lot of their fundraising, things like that. That's pretty dynamite, and they've come up with $250,000 over the year, and that's pretty spectacular, and we'll take it. How's that?
Okay.
Oh, we have to vote on it.
And item K, Notice of Contract Completion, Oakley Park Improvements. I have Mr. O'Rourke and Ms. Zuniga that want to speak on that.
Well, I'm probably going to echo your comment.
Okay, Ms. Zuniga, go ahead.
Probably, we were going to say the same thing. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank and acknowledge Mr. Posada and the department about what a great job they did. And this is a perfect example of partnership between community and the city. And I remember when I was on the Recreation Parks Commission over six years ago, you know, we had a lot of those community meetings where we were getting input and proud to say that the community got just exactly what they wanted and that it's, I was just out there this weekend with several of my grandkids who had a great time out there. And so it's a beautiful park.
Isn't it beautiful?
It's just beautiful. And there were a lot of families out there enjoying it as well, so it was really nice.
It looks like they put a few, added a few more acres there somehow.
Something, something.
It looks much bigger than it would.
But definitely kudos to the department. And while it takes a while, and I know there was a lot of impatience around it, that, you know, it takes a while to do these projects of this size, and in the end, we got exactly what we wanted. So congratulations, Alex.
And I'll just add, not just the recreational parks, although they were the lead, we had all our other departments that participated in that.
Yes, of course.
For public works and everything else, it's just, if you haven't been by, just drive by because, as everyone indicates, myself having played soccer there almost 30 years ago, you can't believe how big that place looks now versus the dirt field that used to be.
And what's amazing about that is that they put in a parking lot there, too. So they even took out.
And a restroom.
And it still looks huge, and it's just fantastic. It's a lot safer for the kids.
Item 3L, the Jim May Park Dentrification Biofilter Project.
Well, I just want to talk on that again, kudos, because we're having to spend a hell of a lot of money to prepare our runoff and so forth and so on. We're being monitored by everybody and God about the runoff and what comes, the nitrates and the other things that do come through our city. We did get a grant, and we're now going to clean some of that stuff out of the water as it passes through to the riverbed, which everyone's concerned about, and onto the ocean. So I just wanted to say that this is a kudo for us, I think.
Thank you. Did you want to talk about item number M, 3M? I'm being facetious. Okay. Okay, can I have a motion to approve any of these?
So maybe I should start out, so a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of. of Items C and G.
Second.
With exception of C and G.
G.
Oh, I'm sorry, D and G. You're right.
D and G. Okay. Any further discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Ohrak?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Then I'd move for the approval of Item D.
Second. So a move in second to approve Item D. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Ohrak?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Now, did we get clear on Item F?
Yeah, we voted on it.
Well, as amended with...
As amended by City Manager Hayden. Good catch.
Are we confused?
No. Okay, you didn't ask me. On the D?
On the, oh, Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
I thought I asked you to apologize.
I thought you were busy, so I didn't want to interrupt you. Okay. That's it? No, we did F. We did F with the, as amended.
As amended, okay.
Move for the adoption of Item D.
G. G. We're on G.
And M and X, no.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Let's move in second to approve Item G. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ohrak?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson?
Epstein.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to Item Number 4. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council has requested to make appointments to the Block Grants Advisory Committee, the Library Board of Trustees, and the Recreation and Parks Commission, and direct staff to continue advertising vacancies on the Block Grants Advisory Committee, Board of Appeals, Landmark Committee, Measure U, Citizens Oversight Committee, the Santa Barbara County Library Advisory Board, Santa Maria Community Television Board, along with any other boards or committees that still have vacancies, as well as discuss the formation of a new Downtown Revitalization Committee.
Okay. And is that your report also? That's all inclusive? Okay. Do we have any requests to speak?
We do. We have one.
We have one? Okay. And Lori Tamora?
Good evening. My name is Lori Tamora with Urban Planning Concepts, and I'm speaking in regards to the Downtown Revitalization Committee. Been an active participant in the downtown specific plan, basically two generations of it. And we haven't had a committee in the past. What we do have is a planning commission, a city council, a parks commission, and several other committees that already are standing committees, including the Economic Development Committee. It seems redundant to have another committee. All of these current, all of these bodies already exist and are actively engaged in the downtown specific plan, and I just, I don't necessarily think it's appropriate to create another committee for this. If there is going to be another committee, the structure of the committee is critical for the success of the downtown community. And that involves public participation of those that are currently landowners or business owners within the downtown specific plan. It is not an appointee or someone from one of the other commissions. That doesn't accomplish anything. It doesn't open up the dialogue. You need to have buy-in. And so I recommend or hope, if there is going to be a commission, it includes those that own land, or have active businesses in the downtown specific plan, so that their opinions are recognized, and they work directly with staff. But my first statement would be, I don't think it's necessary. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tamora. Okay. Do you want to continue then with the block grants?
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, the request before you this evening is tonight to make various appointments to boards and committees that I mentioned earlier. I'll present the boards one at a time for consideration of the appointments and council's ratification. The Block Grants Advisory Committee currently has six vacancies. The recent resignation of a committee member makes that a total of six instead of your five annuals. Staff received applications from three of the incumbents, Greg Bertinet, Rosa Lee Marquez, and Tim Seifert. No new applications were received. The appointees will serve a term of three years each. Nominations to fill the expiring terms will be made by Councilmembers Boyson, Zuniga, and Madam Mayor Patino. Appointments will then be confirmed by Madam Mayor Patino, with ratification by the City Council.
Okay. Councilmember Boyson, do you have a nomination?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, my pleasure to nominate Mr. Greg Bertinet for an additional term. And he even showed up.
Can I, okay. Oops, sorry. Madam, I mean, Councilmember Zuniga, do you have a nomination?
I do. I proudly nominate again, once again, Rosa Lee Marquez.
Okay. And then I will nominate Tim Seifert to the Block Grants Advisory Committee. I accept these nominations, and so can I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved in second to accept Mr. Bertinet, Ms. Marquez, and Mr. Seifert to the CDBG Grants Committee. I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Ohrak?
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
And Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I have two appointees that have resigned. Tahir left town this week, and Donna Walcott had resigned, too. So I've got two appointments. Will you be advertising those in recent times?
Yes.
And I'll work on a couple people who are interested.
Okay. Madam Clerk, could you please continue?
There is one vacancy on the Recreation and Parks Commission, following a recent resignation of a member. Staff received one new application from Jeannie Sparks. The appointee would serve an expired term ending in January 2019. The nomination to fill the expired term would be made by Councilmember Boyson, confirmed by Madam Mayor Patino, with ratification by the City Council.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyson, do you have a nomination?
Madam Mayor, this is an out-of-sequence appointment, and it actually has come up fairly suddenly. So I would like to extend this, and I've been contacted by some other individuals.
So Madam Clerk, can you continue to advertise for the vacancy? And you can read the item next time. Thank you. So, Madam Clerk, could you please continue?
There are three expiring terms on the Library Board of Trustees. Incumbents Avery Gallis, Sarah Logi, and Jacqueline McNeil have each reapplied. No other applications were received. The appointees will serve a term of three years. Madam Mayor will make the appointments with ratification by the City Council. The appointments are made, once after the appointments are made, that would conclude my portion of the agenda report.
Okay. I wish to make a motion and put Ms. Gallis, Ms. Logi, and Ms. McNeil to the Library Board of Trustees. And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. I have a motion. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Ohrak?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
And I'd like to move, I would, do I need to make a motion to direct you to re-advertise? This is, okay.
Not necessary.
Okay, I would like to direct the staff to re-advertise for the vacancies on the Block Grants Committee, the Board of Appeals. How many openings do we have on the Board of Appeals? All of them?
One.
One. Landmark Committee, Measure U, 2012, Citizens Oversight Committee, the Santa Barbara County Advisory Board, Library Advisory Board, the Santa Maria Community Television Board, Recreation Parks Commission, we just mentioned, and any other boards or committees that we have openings. Thank you. Okay. The next would be, moving on, the Downtown Revitalization Committee. I'll ask City Planner Nada Sayer to discuss the formation of the Downtown Revitalization Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. The Community Development Department is putting together a Downtown Revitalization Committee. This committee was called for to be established through the 2015 update to the downtown specific plan, and we're looking right now to put that committee together. The committee is intended to be a three-group committee, consisting of a council member, a Recreation and Parks Commissioner, and a planning commissioner. And the thought process behind that initial makeup of the committee was that the beginning initial phases of the downtown, and the projects that we're looking to implement in the startup of what we're doing, are really, one, driven by the city. The city is taking the lead on these projects, and two, really entail city-owned property and right-ofways. To give you an example, one of the projects that we'll be working on is, we did receive the grant from Caltrans to do a streetscape plan of the major city, or major streets in the downtown. That will entail multiple departments working on a plan, extensive public outreach, lots of discussion of what that's going to look like in creation of that plan. A second project that we're going to be working on this fiscal year is, we did receive another grant to take a look at the core of the downtown and the major properties that the city owns in that area, and looking at opportunities of those properties, such as, should we redevelop them? What should they become? If they are redeveloped, what should they be redeveloped into? And lots of community outreach and engagement and input to see what's going to happen in those properties and in the downtown itself. So this next fiscal year, and the fiscal year after that, there will be lots of community engagement, lots of outreach and workshops, and lots of input given. We do need a board and a committee to help us cipher through all of that input, all of the options and alternatives that can be done, and really helping staff direct what ultimately we decide to go into that plan as adopted and created. There will be lots of engagement with the community, property owners, interest groups, and everyone will have lots of input and say, "We are looking for this committee to help us take all of that, filter it, and really come up with a direction." So in the initial stages, we think it's appropriate that it be made up of elected and appointed officials. In the future years, we do see this committee morphing into more of an association, made up of property owners, made up of the chamber residents, and becoming something like a downtown association that you see in other communities, such as San Luis Obispo, that is an organization of its own that engages the property owners and the community about what to do in the downtown. But for the short term and the start, the committee's primary responsibilities are going to be to provide feedback and direction, and prioritizing what's done in the downtown in these initial projects, to make recommendations to council as needed, to provide a forum for the general public to come and give feedback and input into some of these projects, and then to share updates and information with their respective boards. So the committee is intended to meet monthly, biweekly, as much as needed in this initial phases. We have already talked to the planning commission, and they've appointed Commissioner Dickerson to serve on this committee. And later this week, we will be talking to the Recreation and Parks Commission about their appointment for this committee. But for tonight, staff is looking for an appointment from City Council, of a City Council member, to serve on this committee for this coming year.
Thank you, Ms. Sayer. Ms. Waterfield?
Yes. Ms. Sayer, my question is, the input that we have given to the downtown specific plan in the past, under the downtown specific committees that we have had, will any of that information be transferred over to this new revitalization plan? And what particularly is going to be different than what we've done in the past? Because we seem like we've had a lot of information in the past, and so are we just going, briefly going over it again? What's going to be different?
So the community meetings and the outreach we did just a little over a year ago that shaped the downtown plan, really those community meetings and engagement and interest group meetings we had shaped the strategy we took for the downtown, which was the three-pronged strategy of incorporating activities, partnerships, and beautification in the downtown. All of that input got put into the plan. We are now going to the next step and the next stage. The initial implementation plan required that, or directed that we apply for the streetscape plan and look at what is going to occur in the major properties in the downtown core. Admittedly, the major properties in the downtown core are primarily owned by the city. And so taking a look at what are we going to do with those properties, what do we want to do to beautify them or develop them, we really do need to do a lot more community outreach and engagement, and ask the community, what do you want to see built in the downtown? Particularly like Town Center West parking lots. Those are both city-owned parking lots. They could be redeveloped. We had an old plan that called for one of those sites to be developed into a fifth pad for the mall. But potentially, they can be redeveloped into mixed-use buildings with retail and restaurants on the bottom, and offices on top, or housing on top. There's lots of options. You know, Mr. Grossman had an idea for one of them to be turned into an urban park plaza. So there's lots of ideas floating out there. But we need to really figure out a course and a direction to take there. And so this committee will be put in place to help staff decipher, gather all of that information, get lots of community input, take a look at what the community wants, take a look at what's possible there, and then really set a plan in motion of what to do from here on out. So as far as the last outreach, we took that, we implemented in the plan. This new outreach is going to then take the next steps. So the hopes is this committee is going to really help us prioritize what we do, help us really stay on track with the streetscape plan, help keep all the departments working together and having a focused direction in the downtown, and really help us engage the public in putting together their priority and needs for their downtown.
Okay, so when you say you're, the three-person committee that you're looking for, you will give them the information that has already been taken already, and they will decipher exactly where we should begin in regards to what the community input has already been?
Yes, that will be one of the major parts and roles the committee will play. The streetscape grant that we received from Caltrans, the $300,000 grant, it lays out a very specific course of action we need to take in the process of creating a plan. A big part of the streetscape plan is lots of outreach. And so we're going to get back lots of input from the community. And we need to lay that out with the consultants we hire on, okay, realistically, what can we do? And working with Caltrans, the committee, staff, and the public's input will come up with a plan. So this coming year, I see lots of work from the committee being done on that, and lots of work with the committee being done on the city-owned properties in the downtown.
Okay, so we're taking what we have already agreed on and running with it?
Yes.
Okay, that sounds great.
And if I could add, I have had some discussions with Ms. Sayer and Mr. Gillie on these items. And I think what the whole idea here is that, okay, now that we've got this $300,000 grant, and we do have to get down to some of the minutia that's involved in this, that unless we want to start having lamppost-style city council meetings till midnight every two weeks, that, you know, we should probably refine some of this stuff. Obviously, the ultimate decision is going to be coming back to the City Council, or back through the Parks and Rec Commission, and Planning Commission, and City Council, and those sort of things. But that there is going to be a lot of details that need to be ironed out before I think that we want to really consider, so.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
I would love to be appointed.
I'll second that.
Well, I don't, I think it's for the August, it's for the August meeting. Mr. Hayden?
Yeah, I think the purpose for tonight was to see which council members would like to have an appointment to the committee. And then that gives the mayor and the City Council the opportunity to think about which one to appoint, and then make the appointment on the August 2nd meeting, rather than just making an appointment... on the August 2nd meeting, rather than just making an appointment this evening.
Well, I would definitely like to be considered.
Thank you, Ms. Waterfield.
And I would, I would as well. I think, you know, I have had some interest in this for quite some time and was involved in the re-mapping of the downtown specific plan, but I would also have an interest in that.
Thank you. And does anyone have any feelings, as Ms. Termer brought up, any feelings about business owners and property owners being on that?
Mayor, I would just, in terms of that, I think that, I appreciate, you know, Mr. Termer's input, and I think that as staff has indicated to us that this is a plan that's going to evolve, and so I think probably, given what staff shared with us this evening, that having a small committee of city leaders and stakeholders is important in terms of the engagement, data collection, and providing direction. And then in the future, as it develops, certainly engaging all of the stakeholders, including, you know, the most important, some of the most important people are the business owners in that area, right, would be important. But I don't think it's appropriate at this time to create a larger committee when, as Councilmember Boyzen pointed out, we have some really direct decisions that have to be made currently.
And I think the whole idea of this committee, as I understand it, it obviously is appointed and elected officials. It will be a Brown Act committee, and subject to Brown Act, will be an open committee, will take input, or the committee would take input at every meeting and that sort of thing. So I think the input from the community is going to be key.
Is crucial.
So, yeah, but I think smaller the better at this point.
Okay. Mr. Hayden?
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, I just wanted to mention that I think Ms. Termer's comments were on point. The intent would be to have community involvement, especially from the merchants in the downtown. The problem that we've run into is over the last three years, we've tried to get a downtown merchants association off the ground, and city staff has outnumbered those interested business owners in the downtown corridor. So in order to put this project forward, we want to get the key stakeholders involved, and then also get the business owners involved, but they want to see momentum, and they want to see deliverables first. And so I think that's one of the reasons why we're suggesting a member from each one of the policy bodies to be the initial board.
We need to present a plan to them.
Yes.
So they can say, "This is absolutely..."
To get the interest going.
Absolutely.
Is there any kind of organizing going on with business, well, maybe Mr. Morris can speak to that, any organizing going on as far as businesses on the west side of town? You thought you were going to be able to get out of here without speaking?
Tried to sit in the back row like we weren't going to see you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. There is not currently a formal program focusing on segments of the community. As the city manager pointed out, we've been involved in trying to do a downtown committee for a couple of years now with less than stellar results. I was making a note, as you were talking about, one of our tasks in the next couple of months is to work with them to develop an outreach plan specifically to the downtown businesses, to start engaging them and getting them paying attention, and briefing them on the work of this committee and those kinds of things, so that when the time is right, there'll be people ready to step up, and we'll commit to making that happen for you.
I know a few years ago, both Ms. Stewart and I served on the, was it West Main Revitalization, or I can't remember what it was called, something like that, and we got quite a few people who used to attend that regularly.
Yeah, I think that's a good strategy, is we start to look at segments of the marketplace and trying to bring them together in smaller groups to take on more digestible kinds of conversations. I think that's a plan we'll work with.
Because I think a lot of those, a lot of the businesses, at least ones I've walked into, are owner-run businesses, and so they don't have the flexibility to leave and go to election.
And I think that's a large part of the challenge we've had in the past, is that many of those businesses that we've tried to engage, we've tried to do it during working hours, and, you know, the residual from the recession is that people that are owning their businesses are also operating their businesses and are not available to step out. So we'll find a different strategy, and we'll work with the city manager's office to do that.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, if I, I'm sorry, but if I could, only because I do have a lot of excitement around the downtown specific plan and thrilled about what's happening with Downtown Fridays and stuff, I'd like to throw my hat in the ring as well. I'd be interested in participating as well.
Okay. How about you, Ms. Ork? Clearly no interest. Okay. Okay, so I guess we just move on from that, and that goes back on the agenda, August 2nd, okay? Next order of business is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will conduct a public hearing to hear protests against the abatement of public nuisances such as noxious and dangerous weeds, rubbish, refuse, and dirt, and if no majority protest exists, authorize the Director of Public Works to perform abatement of the nuisances from the public and unimproved private lots.
Staff report is to be made by Director of Public Works, Mr. Khan.
Madam Mayor and members of the city council, in March, the city sent out 242 letters to property owners if their property was in need of weed and debris abatement. 228 of these property owners completed the abatement of the weeds and debrees. The city had a contractor abate the remaining 14 parcels. Tonight, we are recommending that the cost of the abatement and the administrative cost be placed on the property tax bills of the property. The costs of the abatement are attached to the resolution for this item. This concludes my staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Khan?
This is about the same number we had last year, isn't it?
Thirteen last year.
Oh, thirteen, okay.
Up one.
Madam Clerk, do we have any written communication?
No, we have no formal written protests received for this program.
I would like to open up the public hearing and begin with those speakers in favor of the program.
Do we have no requests to speak?
Okay, so I'll close the public hearing and bring the item back to council for discussion or a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2016-103 to be adopted, overruling objections to the abatement and directing the abatement of the nuisances.
I'll second. So we moved in second to adopt Resolution 2016-103. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Orick?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye. Next order of business is a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The council will introduce for first reading and continue to the next meeting for second reading and adoption an ordinance amending Section 2-2.02 of the municipal code increasing council salaries by $263 per month.
Staff report is to be made by Mr. Hayden.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Patino, members of the city council. This item was brought up during the last rounds of discussions with the city council when we were talking about the 2016, 2018 biannual budget. The item is placed on tonight's council meeting for your consideration. Last time council salaries were increased was over eight years ago, back in 2008, when they were adjusted to $1,050 per month. The city council salaries have been increased only four times in the last three decades. Since the city of Santa Maria is a charter city, and setting of council member salaries is defined as a municipal affair, city council has the authority to increase their salaries either through charter authority or by the government code. Specifically, the government code allows for the compensation of council members to be increased 5% for each calendar year from the operative date of the last adjustment of the salary. As I mentioned, the last time we did increases were back in 2008. In your agenda is a comparison chart of other nearby cities. You will notice that Santa Maria, the mayor gets $250 more a month than the rest of the council members do. When you compare what council member salaries are to the city of San Luis Obispo, a city less than half our size, they currently receive $150 more than our council does. And then the city of Santa Barbara, which is slightly less than Santa Maria, the Santa Maria council members receive a third less than what the council members in Santa Barbara receive. As I mentioned, it's been eight years since the council last had a salary increase. Therefore, by law, the increase could be $420 a month for council members. A lesser amount is also equal and lawful. That would be taken a look at in the last eight years. Three of those years, we had a recession, and council did not afford any type of salary increase to city employees. However, five in the last eight years, council did afford a salary increase to city employees. If you take a look at it from that perspective, and you go back five years, council would be eligible for roughly $263 increase per month, bringing your salaries to $1,313. The mayor would also get the additional $250 based off of the mayoral duties as assigned. That concludes staff's report. We're eligible for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Hayden?
Well, Madam Mayor, I just wanted, you know, I did bring this up at the budget meeting, and I take full responsibility for it. I know it's a very difficult question that should be asked, but a couple of things. One, I just, I want the city council to remember and that the stipends that we do receive, that we certainly have attended many functions that aren't reimbursed and this sort of thing, and I want to make sure that everybody understands that I really don't want the city of Santa Maria to get into a situation of where someone would decide not to run for city council due to a significant financial burden going forward. I think it's imperative on us to, you know, continue to provide these increases. The one thing that I would ask also is, and I would probably ask the advice of Mr. Hayden on this, is that I would like to see that annual increases be included with our normal discussions in December of each year, when we determine a cost of living or whatever increase we decide for the management and unrepresented employees. I'd like to see city council included in that, so that it doesn't have to come back to the city council each time and look like, you know, we've got our hand out. I mean, it is a very difficult situation. I mean, we're in effect giving ourselves raises, and those would be the only thing that I would ask that perhaps be added to this. But with that, Madam Mayor, I turn it over to you for...
Okay. Any questions right now? Because I'm going to ask for, do you have any questions?
I don't have a question, no.
Yeah, okay. Madam Clerk, do we have any written communications or requests to speak?
No, we do not.
Okay, so it's not a real hot item out there, Mr. Boyson. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Zuniga.
Thank you. I would certainly support the lesser amount, you know, giving the example for our represented employees that, you know, in years where they didn't get a raise, that we're not going to give ourselves a raise for that period of time, but certainly, you know, taking Councilmember Boyzen's comments, it is true that none of us are up here for the money, and we do spend a lot of our own money to do the work, and that's part of public service. But, yeah, I wouldn't really like to see us give ourselves and take the higher amount and give ourselves money in those years that our represented employees didn't get compensation increases.
Mr. Orick, any comments?
Well, yeah, I'll just say, I was here, one of my first votes some 30 years ago was automated trash collection, which saved us $600,000 a year of hurt workers picking up the cans and those, so forth and so on. And the other was the first raise, and that was driven by the population because we turned 55,000 that year, and that drove the eligibility to get a, I'm not sure whether it was a $50 raise or a $100 raise, but a couple of people accused me of getting in it for the money. And I'll just say, having been on the council for quite a while, and with our population growing and the demands and things like that, there are a lot of people that expect you to go and do and these kinds of things. And when I was a manager at a company, I could write some of that off because the company allowed me to do that. But as a councilman, we certainly don't, can't write that off on the taxpayer. And so the other opportunity is if we do have a stipend that helps us to attend and do some of the things that the public kind of expects you to participate in, it's a relief. And I think Jack's right, someone trying to run for city council, and you're looking how much it's going to cost you to do that. It's harrowing, and, you know, as my wife says, "Where's the money coming from?"
And can certainly discourage, especially younger individuals that are, you know, raising family work.
And I do have to agree, in order to be able to be a representative out to everybody, it does cost money. You look at our grants, our thick five-inch binders, each one of those is a nonprofit, and we get invitations to attend these functions, and their $75 are up, and it's a lot of them that you cannot attend. But I got to tell Mr. Councilmember Orick that, but 30 years ago, $50 went a heck of a lot further than it does now.
Oh, no.
I can understand why the public got upset.
I took it to Las Vegas, put it on the hard eight, and now I'm a millionaire.
But it is difficult. It's really, it's difficult to have to go forward. But I will agree that we, you know, we do the 263 for the lesser amount.
You know, I don't think a lot of people realize that when they run for council at all, the time and expense it takes, because everyone here sits on different committees that we appoint annually, whether it's SB CAG, whether it's LAFCO, whether it's C3H, whether it's the water, and also as alternates. And that does, it does take, takes a lot of your time and money. And when I read off at the end of every council meeting, things I do, I don't do it to say, "Okay, look what I'm doing." I'm just, the people need to know where I've been and what I am doing. Sometimes some of those things that we get, all of us get invited to, are three and four things that start at the same time, and we try to, you know, we try our best to make all of them. So it does take a lot of time, a lot of energy, and it does take money to be on the council.
It does, and for example, the Santa Maria Police Council, even though I'm a member of that and work for them, I have to pay for my own dinners, and it's not at cost because of what we're doing and what we're raising. We're raising funds for the Santa Maria Police Department, so we make darn sure that every board of director and everyone else has to pay their fair share of what they do. So, you know, it does cost a lot of money to participate.
Madam Mayor, I'll just, anecdote, when my son was in junior high, one night when I was reading my council or EIR or something, something of that nature, my son said, "Dad, why don't you just get a second job?" And I went, "Psh, you know what? I could make a hell of a lot more money doing something at nighttime with a company that's going to pay me." So anyway, I was very astute.
Not as much fun, though.
No. Mayor, just one other thing. I had mentioned during the budget hearings when we were talking about this, that I would also like to review the stipends that are paid to the Planning Commissioners and Park and Recreation Commission. As I understand it, those also have been static for several years, and I would ask Mr. Hayden perhaps to bring that back to us, maybe at the August 2nd org meeting, that we could take a look at that and perhaps make an adjustment there as necessary, and again, perhaps throw them into a similar annual increase, just to include it in there. And I don't know, Mr. Trujillo, hopefully there's not any legal issues with that?
No. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. In regards to Councilmember Boyzen's first comment, it's consistently authorized by the government code and the Green Valley case that's cited in the staff report to come back annually to the council at the same time that staff comes back with annual cost of living increases. In regards to the stipends for Planning Commissioners and Recreation and Parks Commissioners, the one difference is those are set by a resolution of the city council, so there's not an ordinance. It's actually an easier process, but we certainly can accommodate that request.
The only comment I would like to make is that...
You're pointing at Santa Barbara.
I'm pointing at Santa Barbara, and I think this is, and I'm saying this in jest, but the council members make $3,519, and, you know, I just know by, and of course, you're familiar to, you said on LAFCO and SB CAG, how much more efficient we run our city than Santa Barbara.
Well, of course, Madam Mayor, they have SEPA, so...
That's right. Chief of Staff.
And that's it. They do have staff that work for them also. So, you know, you forget that? That's the ticket item also.
Okay.
I want staff.
Put that on the next agenda, Mr. Boyson.
Okay, with that, I would move for the approval of ordinance number 2016-16 with, as... as amended, to instruct staff to include the mayor and council's salary for consideration on an annual basis at the same time as unrepresented employees are.
I'll second. So we moved in second to introduce ordinance number 2016-16 for the first reading and continue to the next meeting for second reading. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Next item will be a report by the city manager, Mr. Hayden.
Thank you, Mayor Patino, members of the City Council. Your next agenda will be on August 2nd. We did have one item for that meeting, now we have four. We have two consent agenda items. One is the voting delegate for the annual conference, League of California Cities. It's coming up in October. Second reading of the city council stipend that you just approved right now. And then we have the regular business item, the short-range transit plan will be coming forward for your consideration. Something that we've been working on for a while. And three other regular business items. One will be the funding discussion for C3H. And then the appointment to the downtown revitalization committee will be a discussion item for council's consideration. And then the last one will be adjustments to the Planning Commission and Recreation and Parks Commission stipends. That will be crafted similar to this staff report as well, too. We'll try to give you what the similarities are to some commissions from adjoining cities as well, too, and the last time we gave an increase. So that concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Hayden. Next item is oral reports of council members. Ms. Zuniga.
Thank you. I don't have anything to report. I want to, first of all, thank Councilmember O'Rourke for pointing out and apologize to all the other departments in the city who worked on the Oakley Park project and appreciate all of their help as well. I didn't mean to neglect them. And then, secondly, I just want to acknowledge both our chiefs here and with everything that's going on against the country, just know that your community's behind you, you're behind the departments, behind all of the people who work in the departments. And, you know, I know that many of the wives are praying for their husbands, you know, doubly as they go off to work. And I just want you both to know that there are people all over this community praying not only for the country, but particularly for the men and women in our departments as well, so that we have your backs and we're there for you and covering you all in prayer and asking God to protect you.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Waterfield?
Yes, I'm looking through my calendar here real quick because I did not write everything down. But I did, on Thursday, June 23rd, I had a meeting with Windset and I met with three of their top officials, Windset, talking about their new project. I attended the fire department badge pinning on Friday, June 24th. And on Monday, June 27th, I also attended the swearing-in ceremony for the police department and did a follow-up Windset meeting later on that month. And I believe that is, that is it.
Mr. O'Rourke?
Yes, I attended Tuesday, or I should say Wednesday, after our last council meeting, the League of California Cities Summer Council and Mayor's Symposium in Monterey. Attended the negotiations and the economic development programs there and interfaced with some of our neighboring council members. We all have the same issues, no money. Anyway, that was very nice. Hadn't been there in a while. And then the police swearing-in, which was dynamite out at the new police station, was very nice. I did attend several of the Rodriguez and Ruiz family reunion here.
Reese. It's not Ruiz, it's Reese.
Reese family and everybody else on earth that's related to Patty Rodriguez and her family and a lot of her family worked for the city. There were 180 of them at the Elks Club. It was just bizarre. And the reason I was there, because they adopted us in mid-'90s into their family. And then I attended Alice's booming birthday party on the 3rd that I didn't get invited to. And then just the fireworks.
Well, everyone else was there.
I already said that I went to Pioneer Valley High School for the fireworks stuff. Then I did LAFCO on the 7th, Natural History Museum. There was a shootout, whether they could move into the city of Santa Barbara, had to stay in the county. And they moved part of their property, which is logical, to under the auspices of the city of Santa Barbara. And then we did discuss, and I'll just throw this out, the lateness of emails as information, because LAFCO, particularly over the Natural History Museum, we must have received 150 emails and a couple of those come in six o'clock at night or five o'clock in the morning in your meetings. It's just tough to acknowledge all those and some of those, they would like that read into, you know, rightly so, I guess, into the record. And so we're discussing how and what the appropriate cutoff time is for accepting information from the public, because with social media now, you know, you're walking in here and you're getting an email on your phone. And then concert in the park yesterday?
Oh, that's right.
The kickoff day, little windy, but it was a beautiful day and a nice crowd. And I'll just say that the animal shelter, they come out with adopt me dogs and I'll tell you what, talk about crush your heart when they're bringing those little puppies by and say, please take me home. Anyway, that's it.
Not my heart. Mr. Boyson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, my only AB 1234 report is that I did attend the monthly board meeting for the Central Coast Water Authority. And, but more importantly, shortly after our last city council meeting, the Central Coast Water Authority, actually the Santa Barbara County Flood Control and Water District, received a letter from Department of Water Resources. And if I could just read a couple of sentences in here.
Absolutely.
Department of Water Resources, under conditions described in this letter, is willing to work with Santa Barbara to reacquire the 12,214 acre feet of the suspended S W P Table A water. And Santa Barbara and Central Coast Water Authority are encouraged to work with DWR staff in the state water project analysis office to complete a new contract amendment.
Woo-hoo. Yay. Yay, yay, yay.
But even more important, a letter from Mr. Scott McGalpin, the Director of Public Works at the County of Santa Barbara, saying thank you for this letter and we will be going to the Board of Directors for direction for proceeding on September 20th, 2016. So Mr. Springer and I are going to work diligently over the next couple of months to make sure that we put all our ducks in a row and hopefully come out to a successful inclusion.
Awesome. So how long has this taken?
Well, I've been on this for three and a half years and I think that was one of the first things that Rick Sweet and Chad Springer and I kind of decided was a priority for the city of Santa Maria. So, yeah, it's been three and a half years.
You can't work any faster, Mr. Boyson?
Actually, in government terms, I think that's pretty quick.
That's true, that's true.
Yeah, it's kind of like, government speed is dog years.
That's good news.
So, good news that we are making progress and we've actually got letters in hand and not just verbal indications.
So when do you think that we will be the proud owners of the suspended Table A?
Well, there's still CEQA to satisfy and hopefully we can do that through an agenda, but not through an entire environmental impact report.
So when do you think we can be the proud owners of suspended Table A?
Hopefully before my term ends in 2018, so...
Thank you.
If I can, just to say, and I think The Times was one of the ones that reported that we were the prevailing party in the lawsuit with the log group that's gone on and on.
And on.
Like me, on.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. June 22nd, I, along with Mr. Hayden and I, we presented the State of the City address hosted by the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce. June 23rd, I met with David Wesley and two others from Windset Farms. On the 24th, I was honorary guest at the Olympic Day Celebration of Festival Races at Pioneer High School and administered the oath of the fire department, at the fire department badge pinning. June 25th, I spoke at the Relay for Life. And for all of you that don't know this, it is now, Relay for Life is now in Santa Maria at the Fair Park. You've got a lot of grassy area and people are really excited to have it there this year. So it's in Santa Maria now. June 27th, I did the swearing-in for the police officer, Philip Dix. And June 29th, I attended a briefing on the Depot Street Residence Project update. And later that afternoon, met with people from Windset Farms, a follow-up discussion. July 9th, attended the 92nd Annual Pioneer Picnic held out at Pioneer Park. And it was, that park, it's, every time you go out there, they're, it's beautiful. And I had so many people come up to me and say how beautiful the park was, Alex, and how well the people out, you're still there? Okay, you're awake, and how wonderful the people take care of the park. They just love the park. July 11th, did the Ben Hayes Show and had a meeting with Windset Farms. And this morning, I did the Junior Vet Program Presentation of Certificates at the Humane Society. And there's a couple of high school students that volunteer their time out there. And they're just, they're just wonderful kids. They're really giving back to the community, which I think is very important. And they were recognized. And I did a tour of the Humane Society. And of course, yesterday, I attended Concert in the Park, which was very nice. And again, Mr. Posada, thank you to your department. And that is...
I have one comment to make.
Yes.
You had mentioned the badge pinning of the police officer. What I wanted to let the chief know is that we got a very good view of our future police officers. I believe there were about 12 of them, the young men that were there that were in the academy. And oh my gosh, Santa Maria is, Santa Maria is in good shape with our police officers. But adding those fine young men is just going to be just astounding. I am just so grateful and just proud of our PD. Yeah, oh my gosh, this is great. And they're all excited. They were just so excited because they knew that one of these days, very soon, they're going to be up there getting their badge, too.
She noted there were two women.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Well, what was funny, Ms. Waterfield and I were sitting, standing in the end and we were sort of squinting our eyes. We didn't recognize these people. We thought, how come we don't recognize them? Well, the reason is they don't belong to us yet. They haven't joined the family yet.
Not yet.
So, the City Council will now recess to a closed session. Madam Clerk, please read the title of the closed session items.
There are two closed session items this evening. One would be conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Section 54956.9 subdivision D1 of the Government Code, David Griffith versus the city of Santa Maria. And the second item is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Section 54956.9 subdivision D1 of the Government Code, Santa Maria Valley Water Conservation District versus the city of Santa Maria et al.
Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes tonight's meeting. Good night.